Good evening. I would like to call the December 2nd, 2025 City Council meeting to order at 6:30. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online by phone at the number printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov or in person. Main Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed the public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 a.m. and alternate Tuesday at 8:00 p.m. An archive for viewing on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, we're going to proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance Invocation and Roll Call. Please stand for the pledge of the allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Steve Tai and then please remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Stan Liu.
There we go. Yes, oh, look, I didn't even ask you to stand. Let's say, have the Pledge of Allegiance to the, in my opinion, the flag of the greatest country on earth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessing of this day. Our vibrant community in the Diamond Bar grant the wisdom and unity to our mayor, council members, and their staff as we deliberate for this common good, guide our decisions with justice, compassion, and commitment to all residents and well-being. And we also thank you for this time and the community to come here and celebrate our outgoing mayor, Mayor Tang, and the appointment of our new mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you. Please continue to guard our hearts and minds, and with this name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please be seated.
Don't tell me you can't do that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Liu, for your excellent invocation. And City Clerk Santana, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I'm here.
Councilmember Liu?
Here.
Councilmember Lo?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tai?
Here.
Mayor Tang?
Here. Thank you.
Next item is approved of the agenda. City Manager, Mr. Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
The agenda is hereby approved. Next is city council reorganization. And first is item 2.1, we're going to select our mayor. And are there any nomination for the office of mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Steve Tai to be mayor.
Does that require a second? Okay, well, if we got a second, thank you.
So what happened, nomination of Mayor Pro Tem Steve Tai as a new mayor, and we have a second? Is there any other nomination? None, I'm going to close, I'm going to close the nomination. And so the nomination is for Mayor Pro Tem Steve Tai to be the new mayor. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Tang?
Yes. Congratulations. Steve, you are the new mayor.
Yay!
Thank you.
How did that happen?
Congratulations.
And I'm now going to pass the gavel to our new mayor, Mr. Steve Tai.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you again. I appreciate the confidence, so let's get on with the business. Now it's time for the selection of Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Ruth Lo.
I'd like the second.
Any other nominations? We'll close the nominations. Ms. Santana, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Tai?
Yes, thank you very much. Congratulations. Good team.
Thank you. Thank you for the support and the confidence.
And now at, we have presentations for Mayor Tang. Who, who goes first?
We all go there?
Are we coming down? Okay.
I'm going to remember you keep that one in your pocket.
Thank you very much. Mayor Tang, this is a ritual that we get to give you after you have served your year and done a fine job for Dr. Cha Yu-Tang, Mayor, City of Diamond Bar, from December 24 to this evening, December 25. Congratulations on a job very, very well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I feel very honored and I feel very humbled. I feel humbled because without everybody, I cannot do this job as a mayor for the last year. So I thank my colleagues for their support. I thank all the city staff for their dedication to run the city. And I thank all the residents in the Diamond Bar City. And also the residents come from other areas and all the organizations, community groups, volunteers, neighbors, to work together, to support the city, to support us, and we work together to make the city better. And thank you very much. And last but not least, I want to thank my wife, Theresa Lee. Theresa! I want to thank Theresa for all the support she gave me at home. Thank you. And thank everybody. Without you, we cannot make it. Thank you.
Well, Mayor Tang wanted to, well, councilmember now, I'm sorry, Mayor Tai. Want to thank you for your leadership this past year. I mean, we've all had the title, but we know that it's much more than just a title. It's about uplifting the community, doing the work, and also showing up every day to community events. I know always as a mayor, it's extremely busy because everyone wants the mayor to show up at their event. And you handle the stress and the schedule with such grace. And also thanks to your wife because you let us have him for a year, you let the community have him for a year. I see many events, I know it's very busy, and thank you so much for your commitment also to our, to our city. And thank you for your, for your leadership. It's always a bittersweet moment to pass the gavel, but know that the gavel is passed on to the very capable hands of Mayor Tai, and that we're all here to support you as well, and our new Mayor Pro Tem. So congratulations on a job well done, and we'll miss your leadership, but so glad you're still on the council. Thanks.
Councilmember Tang, thank you so much for being our mayor last year or this past year. I agree with what Councilmember Chow said, that, you know, you just really went above and beyond in showing up and attending all of the community events, and really, everybody is so happy to see you. And I think that it is that way because you bring a lot of joy to the job. You're always smiling, and if, I appreciate your leadership because you're a really good listener. And when we have any debates, you're very thoughtful and you're very analytical and you're collegial. And if there's one word that I can say to describe how you are, I think I would pick the word gracious. Always gracious on the dais, in our closed session, and whenever you're meeting the public. So I really thank you for that. You've really set a nice tone for our, our council for the last year, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Tang for your commitment and your leadership. You all heard of the triple A's, and I have the triple C's to describe former Mayor Tang under your leadership this past year. So the triple C, it is curiosity, community, and courage. And you brought a bit of curiosity to our council in terms of looking at some of the issues that, even in the topics that we sometimes, we often forget. And you're out there for, out in the community a lot. When I say a lot, a lot. And with Theresa as well, you're always out there and smiling and helping and, and engaging the community. And courage, courage, you're not afraid to speak up. I really, really appreciate that and that brings some of the issues that we, some part of a community oftentimes or may, may not speak up, but we appreciate your courage and some of the things that are, we are looking into as a city council. So thank you so much for your, your leadership and appreciate you being on the council. Thank you so much.
And I didn't get to say it because you were saying all the right things, but behind every successful man is a very successful woman. So congratulations again on a, on a year well done.
So Mayor?
Thank you, everybody.
We have some elected officials and their representatives that would also like to present to former Mayor Tang.
Do you want us to move out of the way?
No, you can stay up there, and so we'll start.
Watch this. Go ahead. Come on down, Senator. Yeah, yeah. No, no, right here. This is good. Watch this. Watch.
He's hiding the microphone from you.
You know, I promised only to be here 45 minutes. So let me knock off a couple of minutes, then we'll get going. But, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you so much for representing this great city the way you have. And we heard that you're everywhere. Well, I try to follow your lead because I've got to be everywhere, except I got a million people to deal with. So it's a little bit difficult for me, but I tell you, every time that I'm here in Diamond Bar, I see the joy, the unity, and the pleasure that you all get in serving the community. And I think this is what makes Diamond Bar such a beautiful city, you know, with all the things you do together. The events, the parks, the gatherings, I mean, it's just amazing what Diamond Bar has done for the state of California. And the state of California is so pleased and honored to have me here because of the fact that each and every one of you have given me your time, allowed me to participate with you. And what an honor for me to be here. But, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to call you, Mr. Mayor, for about another minute or two, and then after that, I've got to deal with this guy.
I'm fine with that.
You know, I've known, I've known Steve for a good number of years, ladies and gentlemen. So what can I say? It's, oh, boy, here we go. But Steve, you know I love you, brother. You know that. And each and every one of you, each and every one of you, there's something about serving the community, but doing it with your heart and soul and being there. Whether you're crowning the princess, or you're acknowledging a kid at the baseball park, or you're just celebrating the Fourth of July, that is America. In Diamond Bar, you truly are the city of America. So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mayor Tang, and the City of Diamond Bar, we all recognize you, but tonight, the state of California recognizes you. So if I may, I proudly acknowledge the important contributions and steadfast dedication of Mayor Tang during his impactful tenure as the mayor of Diamond Bar over the past year. Mayor Tang's leadership has been exceptional, and he has navigated the challenges of the past year with resilience and foresight. His innovative initiatives and strategic vision have not only guided the city through challenging times, but have also set the strategic and set the stage for the future of continued growth and prosperity in Diamond Bar. So Mayor Tang's commitment to the community has been instrumental in fostering unity and resilience among the Diamond Bar residents, and they are all so happy and proud that you gave us this year. And please continue to love Diamond Bar as much as everyone in this room does. And may the good Lord watch over you and your family. So on behalf of the California State Senate, the 30th District, I extend my heartfelt gratitude, thank you, and God love you for the work you've done for this city. Please continue your service. God bless you. And now, I'd like to go ahead and address your new mayor for just a second.
I asked for it.
You know, honestly, but seriously, each, we have stories. We go back many, many years. But I will tell you, I can share a story which even every one of you, and that story is of gratitude, commitment, and involvement, and your heart and soul. This is what, this is all about. I'm a former mayor, Kyle Miller, stand up and take a bow. Kyle Miller from my office, former mayor of La Jolla Heights. So we know that when we meet with you and your staff and everyone, we're going to get a job done. It's going to be completed for the betterment of the community. So to all of you, congratulations what you've accomplished tonight. Congratulations to the city. I know you're going to have a great holiday season. I know we finished Thanksgiving, but I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas. Mr. Mayor, I will now give you the, no, I won't. No, I'm not. Yeah.
Do you want to take a moment to introduce yourself?
Oh, my God, did I not? I'm so sorry. I'm your Senator Bob Archuleta. Oh, my God. Did I do that? And please remember, I am your Senator Bob Archuleta.
From Assemblyman, Assemblywoman?
No, Congresswoman.
Oh!
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm here from Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's office, and I'm here to present some certificates to the mayor and the mayor pro tem. And then I also have some ornaments for the entire city council from the Congresswoman who couldn't be here today. But let me present these certificates first, and then I will hand out, thank you so much.
Because she's leaving us.
I will let her know. I will let her know. Okay, so Mayor, this is from the Congresswoman. It says, "In honor and recognition of your time as mayor of the City of Diamond Bar, on behalf of California's 30th Congressional District, thank you for your leadership and unwavering dedication to making the City of Diamond Bar a great place for residents and visitors. I wish you all the success in your future endeavors."
Thank you.
And then Mayor Pro Tem, this is for you. "In honor and recognition of your time as Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Diamond Bar," it says the years, but I'm not, the times, but I'm, I'm going to skip over that. "On behalf of California's 30th Congressional District, thank you for your dedication to making the City of Diamond Bar a great place. I wish you all the success in your future endeavors." Of course. And then here are the ornaments for everyone. I'm just going to hand them out like this really quickly. And one more. All right, thank you.
From Assemblywoman Calderon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stephen Coronel from the Office of Assemblymember Lisa Calderon, who represents the 56th Assembly District, and we are so glad to cover Diamond Bar, and you guys are such a great city to work with. So to Councilman Dr. Chia Yutong, thank you for your dedication to our community. I always see you in every event, and thank you for coming last night and bringing so many toys for our toy drive. That's going to go to a lot of nonprofits throughout the district. So I think that's just one of your, like, you know, compassion, you know, generosity that we always see. So to see that one more time as a mayor, it was a blessing. So we, on behalf of Assemblymember Lisa Calderon, we wish you all the best on your future endeavors. And we do have one more. So thank you to Mayor Tai for your term as Mayor Pro Tem. And likewise, same message, keep up the good work. This is, I believe, your third state as mayor or fourth? Fifth. That must be a record, so.
Who's counting?
But, you know, we trust you to lead the city, just like the last four times. And, you know, Diamond Bar is always going to be in good hands. So on behalf of Assemblymember Lisa Calderon, congratulations, and we wish you the best on your, you know, this, your term as mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi. Hello. Hi, my name is Heidi Quark. I'm the president of Diamond Bar Chinese American Association. Please come up. Yeah, all our members, yeah, yeah.
Don't make us come get you.
Congratulations, Mayor Tang, for a job well done.
From France and the Diamond Bar residents.
This is from, this is from Diamond Bar Chinese American Association. Thank you. Yeah, on behalf of Diamond Bar Chinese American Association, I want to thank you for your service, your dedication, and your leadership. Just this morning, we, Diamond Bar Chinese American Association, we went to the police station and then three fire stations to give a Thanksgiving breakfast to show our appreciation for their service. And Mayor Tang is with us, you know, that shows how much he cares about this community. You know, he's always with, you know, he always give his support and is everywhere.
We will have a lot of fun.
Yeah, we had a lot of fun this morning. So thank you very much, and we wish you all the success in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also representing the City of Diamond Bar residents and the friends. Some, you know, they are shy and sit in the audience. And we really appreciate Dr. Tang's dedication and the care about the city, and also very generous, and he always, okay, support every group. And the more I know Dr. Tang, he's not like most of a politician. He's very humble and very low, low-key. And he just wants to do the good things for the City of Diamond Bar, and we want he ever success in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nikan. I'm the president of TACF, Together Against Crime Foundation, and our headquarters is in Diamond Bar. We have the office in Diamond Bar. And Dr. Tang has been a good friend, and Theresa Lee has also been a good friend to TACF. And I know that Dr. Tang had done a lot of work for Diamond Bar, and on his presentation that, that night, then we learned a lot, and there's a lot to be done also in the future. And his focus has always been on crime prevention, and the residents in Diamond Bar appreciate that. Thank you for job well done. Thank you.
Be sure? Oh, sure. I've never heard that said. Theresa, the shy group is down here.
We have other, over there.
We have other, over there.
Yes, we will go ahead and do a recess for about 10, 15 minutes. There are refreshments out in the lobby, and then we will reconvene.
Super.
Oh, that's good. See how quick that happens? All right, ready? In three, two, one. One more. No, very lovely scene. Very lovely.
Thank you. Thank you all for being with us for the recess. It's item number three is presentation certificates and proclamations. We have none, correct?
Correct.
And city manager reports and recommendations?
No additional reports this evening.
Very good. That brings us to public comments. And public comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary. But no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There's a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. And I have a couple of requests here. The first one is the Miss Diamond Bar Court. Oh, that's so sad they're not here. No, we'll cut them off. No? You're up.
Perfect. Thank you. Good job. Hello. We would first like to congratulate Mayor Tang, and now we would like to congratulate Tai and Pro Tem, Mayor Lo. I am Caden Edwards, 2025, Miss Diamond Bar.
Hello, my name is Emily.
Hello, my name is Natalie.
Hello, my name is Natalie.
Hello, my name is Shria. The Miss Diamond Bar Court with our special guest Santa would like to invite girls and boys under 11 to our very special holiday and toy drive party.
The holiday party will take place this upcoming Sunday, December 7th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Heritage Park.
We will be having a bunch of fun activities that include singing and dancing and storytelling, also pictures with Santa, and also the Miss Diamond Bar Court.
We would like you guys to please donate an unwrapped toy for a local community charity drive. All proceedings will go to the Walnut Diamond Bar Sheriff's Department. And once again, thank you so much and congrats Mayor and Mayor Templeau. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next, I have Kim Ba.
My name is Kim Ba. I've been a resident of Diamond Bar for 35 years. I'm not really sure. I know that you said you don't get into discussions, but I have some comments and questions. Do I wait till the end or how does that go?
Is the item that you want to talk about on the agenda?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'm here to talk about the homeless man that's living under the freeway on the corner of Diamond Bar Boulevard in Brea Canyon. I looked at your website and I saw that your homelessness... I forgot the name of it. The plan for homelessness, it deals with safety for individuals who live, work, and go to school in the city of Diamond Bar. I don't feel that the homeless man living under the freeway is safe. I don't feel that the citizens of Diamond Bar are safe. And I don't feel safe. I know homelessness is not a crime, but is living under a freeway, is that a crime in Diamond Bar? So this is where I'm asking, do I... Do you answer at the end or no?
Normally, we wouldn't. If there's something that you'd like us to take action on or...
Well, I would like an answer. I'm not sure. I don't know if it's a crime in Diamond Bar to live under a freeway.
I'll speak for myself. I don't believe that it is.
Okay.
Mister?
We'll be happy to have staff reach out and provide some updates. It's my understanding that that gentleman is no longer there for at least the last week or so, but they could be back. I have not personally seen him.
He was there this morning. So I've read that homelessness under freeways or on public streets is a city issue. I've also heard it's a Caltrans issue. So I'd like clarification on whose issue it is. I also read in some of the research that I did that in 2013, the City Council of Diamond Bar voted to make sleeping in a car overnight illegal. And I'm wondering if that's still true. So I guess I'd have to wait for that as well.
To my knowledge, I believe that's still in force.
Okay, so we're not allowing people to sleep in a car overnight, but we allow a person out in the elements to sleep without it being illegal. We were told that the man has been evaluated, and I'd like to know if that's true. And if so, by who? Was it a government agency? Was it a nonprofit agency? I'd also like to see if a citizen sees a person defecating in public, which I've done twice to this man. What's my next step? Do we have a homeless hotline like we have a graffiti hotline? Who's responsible for this man? Is it the city? Is it the county? Is it the state? I'm also wondering if Senate Bill 43, which I believe takes effect January 1st of 2026, how that will affect our homelessness response plan in Diamond Bar. And as my last comment, I just feel that we as a community need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. I appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to address the city council? Ma'am?
Mister Mayor, there were no emails submitted for public comment tonight. We do have some callers on the line. And if any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raise hand icon in your go-to webinar program now. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
No hands. Okay, great. Sir, you're up.
All right. Good evening. I just wanted to report, since this is Mayor Ten's or former Mayor Ten's last day, I just wanted to give a brief recap of the crime stats as they sit today. So 93, almost 94% of our crime is property crime. That consists of burglary, larceny theft, GTAs, and arsons. So I'm happy to report that in burglaries in Diamond Bar, we are down 10.4%. In larceny theft, we're down 12.1%. In grand theft autos, we are down 23%. And arsons, it's 100, but it went from 1 to 0. Our overall crime, when you take all the crimes, we're at 818 crimes for the year, and it's down 10.4% as of today. I would like to also point out that the city of Diamond Bar does provide increased patrols during this time. So starting in December through January, we do have extra saturation patrols to prevent the crime that we normally see an increase at this time. So it's to prevent that. So hopefully, we'll see the crime stay down towards the end of the year and into the next year. And just real quick, I know you guys can't comment, but I can. Evaluated some of the questions that the previous speaker had. The evaluations are done not only by the Sheriff's Department, so you can make a call that you're concerned about a person and we can make contact with them. They have to qualify under 5150 of the Welfare Institutions Code, so she can reference 5150. The only way to take somebody involuntarily to a hospital would be if they are danger to self, danger to others, or gravely disabled. That is the 5150 section. So not only can law enforcement do the evaluation, but the city of Diamond Bar also contracts with La Cotta, which is provides mental health services for the area of Diamond Bar and surrounding areas. So I know that La Cotta has been in contact. And also, it's kind of defunct now, but we had LASSA through LA County, and they were also a resource that made contact with the homeless. So there are resources if someone wants it. The resources are only as good as the homeless person who wants the help. When they don't want the help, it comes down to they have to qualify under 5150 for us to take them involuntarily. Defecating in public is a crime. You can notify us. That's a misdemeanor. They can receive a citation, but once again, it's not going to get them really off the street. It's going to give them a court date. You know, a lot of the questions were, how do we get this person off the street? And, you know, we've kind of done away with arresting our way out of it. Bringing them into jail is not the solution. It's a societal problem dealing with homeless. We do what we can to try to get them to help, and if they need to be involuntarily held, we will do that. You know, I wish I had better answers. We keep in constant contact with the homeless people. We know who they are. I think I've mentioned to you guys before that we try to build rapport with them. You know, we're not trying to be ticky tack with them. We're building rapport with them so that when they do need help, that they know that they can contact us and they can trust us, and we'll take care of them. That's the way we do it in the 21st century policing. So we're not trying to scare them out of Diamond Bar. We're trying to help them get placement and get help. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Towsey. City Clerk Santana, is anybody else on the...
No one else is on the line at this time.
Nobody else in the room that wants to speak? Okay, I will close public comments. And that brings us to schedule of future events and consent calendar. Mister Fox?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the scheduled events, please join us on Saturday at Pantera Park from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for our annual winter snow fest and holiday craft fair, and enjoy some holiday festivities with snow, sledding, games, and entertainment. And later that day, the festive cheer will continue at 5:00 p.m. as we light the windmill at the Walmart parking lot at the corner of Diamond Bar Boulevard and Grand Avenue. The planning commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December 9th, has been canceled, and our next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, December 16th, starting at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMD auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the November 18th regular meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated November 12th through November 25th, cancellation of the January 6th, 2026 city council meeting, and approval of a city facility holiday closure schedule on Friday, December 26th, Wednesday, December 31st, starting at noon, and Friday, January 2nd. Approval of a consultant services agreement with HDL, Corin, and Cone for property tax auditing services through December 15th, 2030, and approval of a consultant services agreement with NCE for civil engineering design services related to the city's arterial and residential pavement rehabilitation program for the next three fiscal years, including a determination that the project is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes the consent calendar this evening.
Is there anybody that would like to pull anything off of the consent calendar? I would consider a motion.
I'll make the motion for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Chow and a... Let's see if I can remember what you are.
Your highness?
Second. Second from your highness. Your highness Lo.
Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lu?
Yes.
Councilmember Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lo? Yes. Mayor Tang?
Yes.
Tai. My apologies.
It'll take at least two or three meetings to get that right. Thank you very much. Okay, that passes unanimously. And that brings us to public hearings, which we have none. Council consideration, we have none. That takes us to recess for the Public Financing Authority, and we will turn that over to Chair Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call the December 2nd, 2025 Public Financing Authority Meeting to order at 7:27 p.m. Secretary Santana, can you please take the role?
Yes, Mister Chair. Authority Member Lo?
I'm here.
Authority Member Tai?
Here.
Authority Member Tang?
Here.
Vice Chair Lu?
Here.
And Chair Chow.
I'm here. Thank you. And I'll move on to public comments. Public comments, the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the authority on any items on the agenda or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the authority. At this time, I'll call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then Secretary Santana will ask those caller joining us on the phone who may wish to speak under public comments. I have not received any speaker cards. Anyone in the room that wish to address the Public Financing Authority? Seeing none. Do you have anyone on the phone?
There is no one on the line at this time, and no emails were submitted.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public comments and move on to consent calendar. Mister Fox, can you please read the consent calendar items?
On the consent calendar for the Public Financing Authority, you have approval of the December 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes and approval of the treasurer's statement through October 2025.
Would anyone like to pull any items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move for approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Secretary Santana, please take the role.
Yes, Mister Chair. Authority Member Lo?
Yes.
Authority Member Tai?
Yes.
Authority Member Tang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lu?
Yes.
Chair Chow.
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes. And now we'll move on to a very exciting portion of reorg. First, we'll start with the selection of chair. Are there any nominations for chair of the Public Financing Authority?
Nominate Councilmember Tang.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Here are none. We'll go and close nominations. So I have a nomination for Authority Member Tang. Secretary Santana, can you take the role?
Yes, Mister Chair. Authority Member Lo?
Yes.
Authority Member Tai?
Yes.
Authority Member Tang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lu?
Yes.
Chair Chow?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to our new chair, Chair Tang. Thank you. So now you do it? Then you do it.
So we're going to proceed with the selection of the vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair for the Public Financing Authority?
I nominate Councilmember Lu.
We have a nomination. Member Lu for the vice chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other nomination? I will now close the nomination. And we have a nomination for the vice chair, Councilmember Lu. Secretary Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mister Chair. Authority Member Chow?
Yes.
Authority Member Lo?
Yes.
Authority Member Tai?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lu?
Yes.
Chair Tang?
Yes. So Councilmember Lu will be the vice chair. Thank you. That brings us to the Authority Member comments. And I'm going from, first from Councilmember Andrew Chow.
I have no comment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruth Lo?
Thank you. No comments.
Councilmember Steve Tai?
No comments. Thank you.
Vice Chair Lu?
No comments. Thank you.
And I have no comments. So I'm going to close the member comment session. So we will now adjourn the Public Financing Authority meeting at 7:32 p.m. And I will turn the gavel over to Chair Chow to convene the Parking Authority meeting.
Chair Lo. Chair Lo.
Chair Lo.
Thank you. Okay. I'm calling to order the, on December 2nd, 2025, the Parking Authority meeting to order, and it's 7:32 p.m. Secretary Santana, can you please call the role?
Yes, Chair Lo. Authority Members Chow?
Yes.
Authority Member Lu?
I mean, here.
Here.
Authority Member Tang?
Here.
Vice Chair Tai?
Here.
Chair Lo?
Here. Thank you. Public comments is the time reserved on each regular calendar agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the authority on any items on the agenda or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the authority. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then Secretary Santana will ask for those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak under public comments. I have not received any public comment cards. Secretary Santana, have you any speakers that wish to speak?
There have been no emails submitted for this item, and there are no speakers on the line at this time.
Okay, thank you. I see none, so therefore, we'll close the public comments time. Item number four is the consent calendar. Mister Fox, can you please read the consent calendar?
On the consent calendar for the Parking Authority, you have approval of the December 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes.
Okay. Would anyone like to pull any items for discussion?
I move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Authority Members Tai and Lu. And Chow, sorry.
It's only been eight years.
It's a mouthful. Secretary Santana, would you please call for the vote?
Yes, Madam Chair. Authority Member Chow?
Yes.
Authority Member Lu?
Yes.
Authority Member Tang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tai?
Yes.
Chair Lo?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to number five, very important, selection of chair. All right. Are there any nominations for chair of the Parking Authority?
I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Tai.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the nomination. And Secretary Santana, would you please call for the vote?
Yes, Madam Chair. Authority Member Chow?
Yes.
Authority Member Lu?
Yes.
Authority Member Tang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tai?
Yes.
Chair Lo?
Yes. Okay, well, congratulations, Chair Tai. I'm going to turn this over back to you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the selection of vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Authority Member Tang for vice chair.
Any others? We're good?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. City Clerk Santana, if you'll call the role, please.
Yes, Mister Chair. Authority Member Chow?
Yes.
Authority Member Liu?
Yes.
Authority Member Lo?
Yes.
Authority Member Tang?
Yes.
And Chair Tai.
Yes, thank you. And that brings us to Authority Member comments, given with the comments that we had last. Can we just all agree that we don't have any comments? Excellent. Look how quick that was. And we will now adjourn the Parking Authority meeting and reconvene to the City Council meeting. So that takes us to item 10, which is Council Subcommittee Reports and Meeting Attendance Reports and Council Member Comments. Let us start with the guy that had to wait all year long, Councilman Tang.
Thank you. It's lovely to meet you. Well, today really is a very exciting day for me. Thank everybody for presenting all the flowers and the people who present flower has come, but people also presented me with a certificate I really appreciate, especially the elected officials, Senator Alchilada and representative from the Assemblywoman and Congresswoman's office. They are all very encouraging. I really appreciate everybody's support. And we just mentioned, one of the activities I've been doing is joined a lot of the community groups activity. Now, close to the end of the year, there's a lot of activities such as a toy drive. So I think that's a very worthwhile activity, and there are several toy drives coming. And so I encourage everybody to donate some toy to these toy drives, and because the toy will go to the very needy children, and they will be very happy with what they will get from toy drive. And sometimes the childrens are in a very faraway, very desolate places. They have no activities such as the one we have in Diamond Bar here. And so if they see some toys coming, they will be very happy. The family will be happy. So I encourage everybody to participate in these toy drive. Thank you.
Councilman Chow?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Tang for a job well done. It's not easy being a mayor, and there's a lot of responsibility, but you handled it with such grace, and you're always very collegial, and you're definitely a joy to work with. So looking forward to your continued contribution to the council. I want to congratulate Mayor Tai on your fifth time. Who's counting?
Yeah, exactly.
That was quite an honor. I think only former Mayor Herrera
That's right.
had more than five, right? Is that true? Okay. Well, we'll see about that. Congratulations. Last week, I attended the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust meeting. So during that meeting, we approved a funding package for a project in Duarte that's coming online in the amount of $2.46, $2.5 million. It's been really a privilege and honor to serve on that board and to represent our district. We did talk about how come Diamond Bar doesn't have any projects, or how come we haven't received funding from them. So we're kind of in talks about what resources we can potentially bring to Diamond Bar for a variety of things, you know, dealing with the homeless issue and different things. You know, it's not just about building shelter. That's part of the equation, but it's also about having wraparound services, having the right team in place to deal with whatever comes up. So that's all I have. So thank you. Have a good night.
Councilman Liu?
Thank you, Mayor. Five times, Mayor. I'd like to thank staff for the amazing presentation for the event today. And I'd like to thank their community for coming out today to celebrate our outgoing mayor and our incoming mayor and incoming Mayor Pro Tem. And then also, speaking of community, we very much appreciate our community. During Thanksgiving, at one of our business communities in the business, Red Dragon, they hosted turkey giveaway. And for our community of members of the community, especially our elders that are in the community, and with turkeys and fresh vegetables, even with dessert. So it's really, really nice, and our community donated and put that together. And also, there are many, many different toy drives that are going on and through now till about Christmas. One of the big ones is for our sheriff's stuff, a patrol car. And that one, I hear that Diamond Bar princesses are collecting that, and I believe our sheriff station will be collecting that and the windmill lighting as well. It's quite amazing, and with the toy drives that are giving out, and also the multiple toy drive or taking toys from our community and delivering it outside of our community for our military personnel and families. That's wonderful as well. And I'd like to thank our outgoing mayor once again, Dr. Tang, for your great service to our community and your leadership. And congratulations, our five-time mayor. Five times, five times. Tai and Mayor Pro Tem. And Lo, looking forward to your leadership. And we look forward to seeing everyone at the Snow Fest this Saturday and also our windmill lighting. Please don't forget to bring a toy for our toy drives, a stuff by patrol car. That's a good night. Thank you so much.
You can just call me Quentin, okay? Mayor Pro Tem Lo?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations on your selection. I won't mention it, that is your fifth time, because I think we have enough. But congratulations, you have big shoes to fill and lots of activities to attend. So get a lot of good gas in your car for all of those activities. Anyways, and again, thank you, Councilmember Tang, for your service as our mayor in 2025. Thank you for the comments about the toy drive and giving to the kids who might be in need. And I just want to bring one other thing to your attention at this time, and that is food drives. At this time, I believe Councilmember Liu talked about food drive in Thanksgiving. But the Rotary Club is sponsoring a food giveaway to needy families in our area. And they've gathered a lot of goodies to give to those families, and it's a joint project with the Friends of the Library. So it's food and books. And, you know, it's just another way of fulfilling, just sharing the Christmas spirit. And in addition to sharing good things, consumables, you know, kind of think about people who might be friendless, who might be lonely, and who might be suffering from illnesses. And if you're able, maybe extend your hand and extend a phone call, text, a message. You'd be surprised how far that goes and how much a person is filled up with that. And so maybe we'll see where that goes. Please put your calendars on for Saturday, December 6th, for the Snow Fest and the windmill lighting. So thank you, staff, for all of the preparations for tonight and for the upcoming festivities this coming weekend. With that, I'll say thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So let me just start by saying, former Mayor Tang, congratulations on a job well done. Former Mayor Liu, former Mayor Chow, former Mayor Lo, and current Mayor Pro Tem. We've all had a crack at it. I think we've done a terrific job as a team, and I look forward to keeping that going. And certainly, thank you for all your confidence in me for the fifth time.